Good afternoon. This is the Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session. It is Wednesday, October 19th, 2022. It is 2:30 PM. This session is set to go till 3:30 PM. This is a hybrid meeting. We're in Building 1 and 280 for public virtual attendance. You may follow along on the Thurston County YouTube channel. I'm Carolina Mejia. I'm the Chair of the Board. To my right is Vice Chair Ty Emmerich. Commissioner Gary Edwards is excused for this session. He is at an economic development council retreat. Also in the boardroom, we have County Manager Ramirez Chavez, as well as Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell, as well as Director of Planning and Development, Dasha Cummings. The topic on today's agenda is the Shoreline Master Program update.
I don't think this item needs introduction. I think it's a long item the commissioner's been waiting for quite some time. So here we are.
Yeah, so I'll jump in just as brief introduction. And kind of one of the things I want to check in on is, as the county manager said, this has been a work in progress for a long time. The Board of County Commissioners provided very clear direction to CPED in the past couple of years to work very tightly with the Planning Commission in the process to get something to the Board of County Commissioners for their review. And I want to just express my appreciation to the Planning Commission and CPED staff in going through that process to get to this decision-making point. Today, we'll have an intro. This is, our perspective is, as staff, we want the Board of County Commissioners to feel as comfortable as possible, ask as many questions. We want a good document that moves forward to public hearing and then thereafter to ecology. But from where we sit, this is a win. It's been a long time coming to even get to this. So in terms of process, we're at a very good, successful point. The next step is going to be having a conversation on policy. So today, Andrew DeFogus, sorry, Andrew, will provide that kind of framework of the discussion that happened with the Planning Commission and the policy discussion that the Board of County Commissioners will review for next steps. So, any to add, Chris, or kick it over to him?
Nope, let's just start it.
All right, Mr. DeFogus.
Okay. Share my screen. And it seems to be a bit of a lag, but it should work. Great. So I am here today to introduce the Shoreline Master Program update. Kick in a moment. There we go. So I'll give you some policy background, explain what the process has been to date, take you through the pieces of the SMP update, talk about how things are changing from a high level, discuss some of the areas that there has been some focus on from PC, excuse me, Planning Commission and the public, and then give you some insights into what comes next in the process. So the county is updating its Shoreline Master Program. The update includes both what's known as the comprehensive and the periodic updates. The updates are intended to meet requirements of state law, including the Shoreline Management Act, which is RCW 9058, as well as the implementing guidelines within the WAC. And attached to the briefing for the board's reference and for the public is a list of resources, all of the applicable laws and some draft documents themselves. So don't feel like you need to memorize any of those numbers. And so the SMP Shoreline Master Program was last comprehensively updated in 1990, and that is still the document that staff are lamenting today. So a little bit of background on master programs. Shoreline Master Program or an SMP is how local governments implement the Shoreline Management Act for those shorelines that are under Shoreline Management Act. They include both general guiding policies as well as regulations for new development and are intended to reflect the local conditions in each community that adopts an SMP. They are required to be consistent with Shoreline Management Act and its implementing guidelines, and when they are implemented must result in no net loss of ecological function, which I will touch on in a bit. So the Shoreline Management Act has three main policy objectives, which you will see reflected throughout the SMP. There we go. The first is to encourage water-dependent uses, that is, those uses that can't go anywhere else but the water, such as a marina, to protect shoreline natural resources, including water quality, aquatic and marine habitat, and riparian areas, and to promote public access to our shorelines. The Washington State Department of Ecology is the main state agency that oversees SMP development. They develop the guidelines that are now in the WAC or the Washington Administrative Code. Their staff assists jurisdictions as they develop their SMPs. And then Shoreline Master Programs must all be approved by ecology, who then has a further permitting role as we implement the SMP. Certain types of shoreline permits must be approved by ecology before the development can take place. What are shorelines? Where does the SMP apply? What are we talking about? There are several different elements of our natural environment that make up shorelines that are regulated by the SMP. It includes marine waters, which in our case is Puget Sound, lakes that are larger than 20 acres, such as Black Lake or Summit Lake, streams or rivers with a flow greater than 20 cubic feet per second, such as the Tushuts or the Squali Rivers. It also includes the areas landward 200 feet from these water bodies, which are known as shorelands, as well as floodways and floodplains that are associated with those water bodies, wetlands associated with these water bodies, and shorelines of statewide significance, which for us is the Squali Delta is a good example of that. The county's Shoreline Master Program update also includes critical areas that are within shoreline jurisdiction and the buffers that are necessary to protect those as well. So briefly, some background elements that led up to the SMP draft. The first step in the process was an inventory characterization, which was conducted in the first phase. This process identifies the baseline conditions of our shoreline, including what's going on out there with land use, zoning, and environmental conditions, the degree that the shorelines have been modified, what types of public access are out there, among many other parameters. This information is used to separate shorelines into smaller planning units, which are known as reaches. So on one river, you would have dozens of reaches for the purpose of having planning, smaller planning units. And we have hundreds of these throughout the county shoreline. There's something like 500 or so reaches among all of our shorelines. So the second step is to use that information to provide environment designations to each of those shoreline reaches, essentially calling out what type of shoreline you're dealing with, and therefore what rules would be appropriate to protect shoreline ecological function. So the type of shoreline that you have or the designation that it's given, that controls whether you can do a certain use there, what type of permit you might need, and the rules that that development would ultimately follow. In a way, it's like zoning for the shoreline. So briefly, just to show you the five types of shorelines that we have in our SMP, we have used five from the menu that ecology provided in the WACs, and you're going to see these terms as we continue through this update process. So briefly, shorelines that are relatively undisturbed or pretty pristine were designated or typed as natural. Shorelines that are more heavily impacted, that have homes very close to the water, a lot of shoreline modifications, such as bulkheads, are given the designation of shoreline residential. And then in between those two conditions, pristine and highly developed, you have your conservancy shorelines. These are shorelines that have some degree of development, but also retain a significant amount of ecological function. And those get typed as rural conservancy or urban conservancy, depending on if you're interout of UGA. And finally, aquatic is below the ordinary high watermark, i.e. in the water. So the county has mapped the preliminary shoreline types, and I threw it up on the slide just to show you kind of what that looks like. I don't expect you to be able to decipher all that, but the maps are available on our website. And also, there's a link here for anyone viewing the PDF of this presentation to get to an interactive tool to explore the various shoreline types and see how the area subject to the Shoreline Master Program and the shoreline types are proposed to change. So up here on this slide are the items that make up the official package that the county will ultimately submit to the Department of Ecology. It includes the SMP update itself, which are the rules and policies for our shorelines and our mapping. It also has those background documents we just discussed, the inventory characterization and the shoreline environment designations report. There's a cumulative impacts analysis that the county will complete prior to submittal, which summarizes how the protective pieces in the SMP will result in no net loss as we implement the master program and anticipated development occurs on our shorelines. And then, of course, we'll also provide documentation of the public process that the update went through and complete all the necessary checklists to demonstrate that the update is complying with state law. I did want to talk a little bit about no net loss because this is an important concept in the SMP, and it's also something that we heard a lot about from the public and the Planning Commission so far in the process. No net loss essentially means that over time, the existing condition of your shoreline ecological functions should remain the same as the SMP is implemented. It's designed to halt the introduction of new impacts to shoreline ecological functions resulting from new development. And there are several pieces of the SMP that help to implement that standard. So briefly, the Shoreline Environment Designation System, or that shoreline typing, helps to ensure that we apply the correct rules to the areas that need protection for shoreline function. The policies in the master program, those were developed earlier in the process and help define what type of development can occur in shoreline type and also help guide the development of the regulations and implementation of the SMP. The permit requirements determine what or whether permits are needed for a given use, depending on the intensity of the use and the sensitivity of the environment. And then the shoreline buffers and the development standards in the document are intended to protect ecological function while allowing use of the shoreline, and they are tailored to each shoreline type. All development that happens on the shoreline is required to go through mitigation sequencing, where we seek to see that impacts are avoided, minimized, and mitigated. And then there's also a restoration plan element of the SMP that highlights opportunities for voluntary restoration to help address cumulative impacts of shoreline development and also historic impacts that have happened in the past. One item I didn't put up here, but it's also very important, is no net loss monitoring. The county is required to monitor no net loss at the permit level and also the programmatic level to ensure that we're meeting that standard. And if not, we'll need to address that in the next update. Okay, that little blue ball stopped spinning. That's good. Okay, so the timeline for this update, it actually began back in 2009. It was docketed in 2009, and that's when the data analysis began. Consultants were hired to produce some of those background documents. A Science and Technical Advisory Group, or STAG, was convened to guide the process, and we did a first round of public outreach. Four years later, those initial background documents, the inventory characterization and shoreline environment designation report were published, which are the backbone of them producing the SMP itself. The Shoreline Master Program draft was first taken to Planning Commission back in 2017. And then over the next five years, the Planning Commission worked on that over 81 work sessions and a public hearing before ultimately issuing its recommendation this past August.
Say that again, how many?
Eighty-one work sessions with one public hearing over five years. So here's the timeline laid out in a linear fashion. We're kind of testing out a new way of demonstrating phases of projects. So just to kind of put that out there in that fashion, beginning with the initial docketing. And as you can see, a lot of the work and heavy lifting has happened over the last five years or so. So what's changing in this Shoreline Master Program update? How does it compare to the current one? First of all, it is a repeal and replace of the existing code. So we're going to be replacing Title 19 with a brand-new title. The draft SMP updates those areas that are subject to the master program. We've got new data that indicates which water bodies should be subject to it and what their boundaries are. There's also been a fresh look at how the shorelines are typed again, the shoreline environment designations, based on that inventory characterization that was completed earlier in the process. Some of our shoreline buffers are proposed to change, particularly those for the lakes and marine shorelines. Although, one thing I would note is that for those most highly developed and impacted shorelines, those buffers are not proposed to change with the draft. There are several new flexibilities for landowners that have been introduced into this draft, primarily for legally existing non-conforming structures. So if you've got a structure in the buffer, how can you expand, alter, maintain those? There's some new flexibilities there. And also for additional uses in the buffer that the current SMP does not allow, so some accessory uses for existing development. The master program is going to be streamlining and combining permitting for critical areas that are in SMP jurisdiction. Right now, there's two sets of permits for critical areas and shorelines. That's going to be going away. And if you are within shoreline jurisdiction, there's only going to be one set of permits, which should be a much more efficient review process. And then the development standards across the board have been updated. We were seeking to reflect the requirements of state law and also incorporate the feedback that was received by Planning Commission and the public throughout the process. And one of my main messages to folks is that wanting to know, how does this change affect me? What's happening with my property? Is to ask them where they live and what are they trying to accomplish on the shoreline? Because really, it is site-specific, and there are many factors that control how this master program would apply to a given property. So folks are encouraged to contact staff with questions, and we're happy to talk to them and see where they're at and what kind of project they want to do and let them know how the update might affect them so that they can make their public comments effectively. So I wanted to highlight some areas that the Planning Commission and public have focused on over time, as these are things that the board is likely to continue to receive comment on and certainly maybe things that you are interested in as well. There's been a lot of discussion from the public over what is the appropriate width for our shoreline buffers, ensuring that we're matching the correct shoreline environment designation or typing to our shorelines, how no net loss is reflected in the document and how the county plans to monitor no net loss over time, ensuring that the draft preserves private property rights for shoreline landowners. And a big piece was how we refer to non-conforming development, that is, development that's legally developed at the time, but now, you know, based on application of a new law, it no longer conforms to that. How do we refer to those things? And then what are the allowances that such development has? And then there was a lot of focus on several of the different uses and modifications that one could seek to have in the shoreline. And I've listed those last four bullets up there. We got a lot of comment about agriculture, aquaculture, mooring structures such as docks, and what should the standards be for those, as well as shoreline stabilization. A lot of conversation about bulkheads and where they're appropriate on the shoreline and how one could implement a bulkhead. Almost through it here. So just briefly, I wanted to highlight the public process to date and some significant milestones there. As I mentioned, we did have initial outreach workshops prior to developing the SMP way back in the beginning stages of the process. And there has been significant public comment at all of the Planning Commission meetings or many of the Planning Commission meetings that have been held over the last five years, both verbal and written comments. And then during that process, over 2018-19, there were a handful of meetings, stakeholder group meetings convened that involved both community members and technical agency staff. The department held an in-person open house in December of 2018. And then we also did a two-month-long virtual open house in 2021, I should say, August 2021 and October 2021, my apologies. Last year, we had about a two-month open house period right before the public hearing, which was in October of 2021. And then staff have been able to go out and do presentations to community groups, you know, on request. And we will remain, retain that ability as we continue to look forward, happy to go out and speak to specific groups about how the update may affect them.
Sorry, can you move back a little?
Yeah.
So the August 2021, the virtual open house is launched.
Correct.
October 2022, Planning Commission public hearing.
No, October 2021. Those should both be 20, yes, those should both be 2021. My apologies. But then, yeah, August 2022, that was when the Planning Commission passed their recommendation.
So there would be another bullet point below October 2021 that says August 2022, Planning Commission passes recommendation.
Right.
Okay. Let's update that slide when we get a chance.
Absolutely. Okay, last slide here. So what's coming next in the process? We will return to the board after we've had some time to review the SMP documents, and we'll bring forward some policy decision points to see where the board wants to focus any additional changes prior to the board ultimately setting a public hearing. We would anticipate scheduling a public hearing sometime in the first quarter of 2023. That's the current projection. After which, the board would revise the SMP based on public input and do their local adoption. The SMP will then go to ecology for final review and approval and does not take effect until ecology ultimately approves that. So several steps left to go, but we're excited to enter a new phase. And that is all that I have for my remarks. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. And then you can stop sharing here.
Really? So people can learn more about everything that you've kind of just said in all history at www.thurstonmp.org?
Yes, correct. Or call me. I'm happy to talk about it.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Questions?
Oh, yes. Okay, so just on that last slide. It says October 2022, Planning Commission public hearing.
It was last year.
Oh, that's, that's what you were asking about, okay.
Yeah, I was, apologies.
Right, no, they're not.
So let's go over that again.
Yeah, should I launch that again?
Just, yeah, please. So we're going to update the slide.
It's lagged once I launch it. Okay, so I was going to say those bottom two bullets there that have 2022 in the date should both have 2021. So apologies.
Is that your PowerPoint? I've taken it on this spot.
Yeah, I did it on this spot. Can we do it now?
I can do that now.
So he's going to do August 2021, October 2021, and then add a third bullet point that says August 2022, Planning Commission provides recommendation.
Got it, got it. Okay. So I guess, starting with no net loss. So if ecology approves the plan that we submitted up to them, are they basically, are they saying that you've, that they bless the no net loss protections that are in the plan? Or is that still on us somehow in terms of we failed to live up to ecology's estimation of what no net loss?
So it worries. If they, one of the elements in the checklist is to demonstrate that, you know, how we're meeting no net loss. It's kind of, it's filtered throughout the items that were required to demonstrate in the document. So there are multiple places in the document where we're meeting that standard. And there's also, we have to produce a summary report as part of the package that says, here's how we're achieving this. And so if they do approve the master program, that means that in their view, our master program is meeting the no net loss standards in state law. But there is another element to that. As we implement, we are required to monitor that and track those impacts at the permit level and, you know, course correct as necessary. So with the next update, which I believe every eight years we're required to update, we will need to course correct as necessary.
And you said there was community discussion about how that adapted. Like, what are we measuring to decide whether or not we're meeting that?
Yeah.
Because, I mean, for me, like, I, so one of my committee assignments is salmon recovery council, and we are constantly talking about how, it's taken as a, it's taken as a maxim that no net loss has failed as a policy. It's failed to actually produce no net loss. So I'm wondering, and so that's why there's been discussion in legislature in the last two sessions about net ecological gain and how that might be pitched or characterized so that it actually does what no net loss was supposed to at the time. So I guess I'm wondering, how are we sort of thinking about this in those terms? That it's not no net loss from 15 years ago because that's failed, but it's a new no net loss that's better? Or it's looking toward net ecological gain? Or it's, or is there, and this is a bunch of questions, I understand, but is it, do we, do we know if ecology is going to sort of change its, you know, its definitions or its requirements around no net loss because of this sort of understanding that we're losing ground with salmon runs, we're losing ground with riparian areas? I mean, and so no net loss, as it's, as it might have been existed 15 years ago or whenever this plan was done, was just not going to cut it.
So the, what's currently in state law is the no net loss standard. And yes, there have been conversations and attempts to adopt a net gain, but for the time being, we are going with what's adopted in state law. So we are aiming to hit a no net loss standard. The good news is, characterize it that way, that baseline for no net loss starts when we adopt the SMP. So even though we have these snapshots of ecological conditions that help to form that document, the baseline for measuring whether we're achieving no net loss doesn't start until we actually implement it.
But like, so, I mean, no net loss is kind of super high level. And it's kind of, and I think this, you're touching on that when you're saying the community discussion about, well, what are we measuring to decide? And so I'm wondering, like, has that evolved in terms of what ecology advises that we, that we measure in order to make sure? Because, you know, like, I mean, another one, you know, another related area is like shoreline armory, you know, is something where science is evolving on that. And what might have been seen when the Shoreline Master Program was first put in place is, you know, a good program for shoreline armoring to achieve no net loss might not be the same today, without changing it to net ecological, just keeping it no net loss, but understanding that there's a lot more new, there's a lot more, I know from the salmon world, there's a lot more data about, you know, shoreline armoring and how it affects nearshore habitats, especially in South Puget Sound, respect to, you know, salmon nursery, all that. So is that changing? I mean, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is like, is that changing at a state level that we're now meeting up to? Or can we, you know, recognize that science and apply it in our own program? Because this is obviously tailored to local conditions. Not everybody has nearshore salmon, you know, marine habitat like we do in Thurston County. I mean, we're unique. That's why we get this latitude under the SMA.
So I think, I'm not sure how prescriptive the WAC or the ACT are on those parameters that we have to monitor for no net loss, but you, we, you know, it outlays that we have to do it. The draft SMP itself does have several different parameters, which were derived from ecology guidelines that we're going to be monitoring as proposed. Things like the degree of vegetation cover in the shorelines or the linear feed of bulkhead or the amount of impervious surface in the shorelines. These are all things that we are hoping to track at the permit level by developing like a worksheet that either the applicant can fill out or the planners can do with their assessment to gauge that in real time. The way that the draft is written, though, it is open to adaptive management. We list out several of those parameters, but it's an included but not limited to type piece. So if there are additional things that we're made aware of or want to monitor that makes sense to do so, I believe we would have the flexibility to do that. But of course, you know, through this process with the board, you know, you also have the ability to focus in on what's in the draft and, you know, tweak that as you see fit.
So taking an example of bulkhead miles, let's say, is it assumed that if that's increasing, then shoreline ecological function is decreasing? So we want, in terms of achieving no net loss, we want to not increase the number of bulkhead miles? And if we are, then we need to change course?
Yeah, if, well, I think going back to like the project level, you're trying to mitigate for impacts on site. So you're trying to limit shoreline modifications in the first place. In those places where they do occur, you're trying to mitigate for the impacts, recognizing that, you know, there may not be a net zero at the project level. And so that's where pieces like the restoration planning come in, where you try to do more holistic or, you know, advance and promote more holistic opportunities to get yourself to that no net loss or to some type of cumulative gain.
So more bulkhead miles could potentially be compensated by better, longer vegetation covers or something similar?
Or removal elsewhere, yeah. And the one piece of the master program is the mitigation options appendix, where depending on the type of project you're doing, there are options for how you might mitigate that. And one of the first things for new bulkheads is tear out old bulkhead if you don't need it elsewhere on the property[1762.95] If you don't need it elsewhere on the property or there's some structure that's right there on the water, you can remove those things, try to balance that impact. That's the sort of thing we're gonna be looking for from an applicant when they're doing their mitigation sequence.
I might also just kind of retry that question. I would say that the adaptive management has grown. It's not been stagnant. So if you're thinking about what it was and the things we can do to mitigate, it has changed to try and achieve that no net loss. So what we've got in the program that is coming to you, I think Andy kind of touched on it, is it starts from when it gets approved. So there is, it has grown, it has changed, it has tried to achieve the goals of no net loss. And what we knew then, we know different things now. So we've grown, we've learned. It's not stagnant. Is that helpful?
So a quick time, so both of you said, and see if I understand it, as soon as the ecology approves this plan, that's when the net loss baseline is established. Right? So at that point, the baseline is established. And all the adaptive management strategies included in this plan does is to maintain the baseline in the future. Is that?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Is that like, that's how a lot works? Like every time you update, you reset the baseline?
Uh, I'm not sure with the periodic updates. I'd have to look into that for you. But because it's the comprehensive update which implemented all the big major sweeping changes in Shoreline Management Act that all jurisdictions have done, that was back in 2011, I think is when that was technically due. And then every eight years or so, there are periodic updates. But I, the baseline might be that original comprehensive.
So it's not retrospective, the strategies, because it's used to, there's a lot of moving pieces. You know, there's a lot of strategies that kind of is put in place to protect, you know, shorelines in a way. But as soon as this plan is approved, that's the baseline.
Correct.
And that would be a very problematic strategy over a period of time, you know, like, okay, here's the baseline. Oh, your plan failed, but you redo it. Okay, now here's the baseline. You just keep failing and getting worse and worse. I'm not saying that's where we're at, but.
Right.
I think that's what I think.
You can't just keep resetting the baseline or you just keep flipping.
But that's what I think the major update does is.
Sets that baseline.
Sets the baseline. And then the strategies included in this plan is to manage the baseline not to cover net loss.
So do we need to, would there be then regular reports to ecology on how well we're doing that? To show that we are monitoring or?
Um, I would have to look into the exact mechanics of that because I've been focused on getting this one done. But I think at the bare minimum, we would potentially have to demonstrate that at the next periodic update.
The next update.
Yeah, I don't know exactly what form that would take, but I know that we're planning to do it on, you know, on an individual permit level and I believe at an annual level.
And what happens if we're not maintaining no net loss? What happens then?
That's a great question. I would anticipate, well, I would anticipate that we would see some required changes to the master program come back. You know, if we're submitting to them and saying, this is how we believe we're meeting no net loss, they come back and say, we disagree. Here are recommended or required changes to get you to that level. I'm not sure what the regulatory backstop is.
Because I think it will be at least more complicated because it's not, no net loss is not done at the project level.
That's correct.
It's at the program level.
Yeah, I see.
And managing of that goes back to adaptive management is gonna be extremely tasking.
Right, which is why I believe it's every eight years, we provide a report to ecology. And we're monitoring it as we go along and that's what the adaptive management is there for, so that we can continually monitor and manage how we're implementing. And then those update periods, we actually go in and make substantive changes if we need to in order to ensure that we are continually meeting those no net loss. That's.
But if there's no penalty for not meeting it, then you're exactly where Commissioner Mencer was suggesting. Oh darn, we didn't make it. So now we're down here and this is the new baseline. And dang, eight years later, you know, until you got no protected.
So we'll look into the exact mechanisms for this.
Absolutely.
So I could go all day on specifics, but at a higher level of process, how are we gonna, as a three-person board with all this? I mean, I literally have phone books on each one of your topics here. Aquaculture, buffers, agriculture, docks and shoreline substantial development permit. I have community members that have just sent me, and I mean, community members that seem to be involved in this area are not like, they're like scientific articles and former retired, you know, fish and wildlife people. I mean, they're like really overwhelming.
And they're like.
Community input that I can't even make sense of in some cases. And I'm just wondering, it's a complicated document. There's a lot of obviously hot button point, policy points. You know, is there a way for you guys to manage, like drill down or not drill down, kind of the opposite? Like identify the policy points that the commissioners ought to be focused on? And I, the example I've used to Josh and talking about this is like, the best example I've seen of this is the mineral lands exercise that we went through. You almost, I mean, it sounds crude. I don't mean to demean the board of county commissioners, including myself. But in order to manage something so complex with so many elements with a three-person board, you almost need like a multiple choice style of presentation where you've got a policy issue. And in that, in the mineral lands case, there was like, staff said this and planning commission said that. And the key agricultural community stakeholders said that. There's your choices. Board, what do we think? You know, do we need more information? And then we could go step by step. Because I can get lost. I mean, just trying to read, going through the minority report, which I appreciate all the detail in here. But it's, this would be hard for a board of county commissioners to get through, even if we, you know, even if all three of us completely agreed with everything in it, just applying it to what has been, you know, produced by the planning commission. Anyway, you guys get what I'm saying. It's just, I don't want to spend, I don't want to spend the eight years that the planning commission worked on this. I wanted to do this efficiently, but get it right, apply the appropriate level of scrutiny that we need to do to do our jobs. But, you know, get this, I mean, this thing is so overdue that it needs to get done. So I'm trying to balance those two, you know, get done in the weeds, doing my job right, but not creating a process that just comes us up.
I'm going to agree with Commissioner Mencer on that because just, there's so much detail and so many different aspects of this, so many different focal areas that we could spend work session after work session on this. And then it would be eight years until, so I agree with having kind of that breakdown on the policy issues that we need to decide as a board would be very helpful. Because if not, we're gonna be looking at points that maybe we shouldn't be focusing on or. And I've received a lot of public comment about this as well. And it's hard to just digest through all of it. I'm sure the planning commission has received a lot of public comment on this process as well that they had to digest through. So just having that breakdown, I'm in complete agreement with Commissioner Mencer on that.
Yeah, I mean, if you, you know, you guys, we have the luxury in this situation of such a long process involving staff and planning commissioners. And I say luxury because I feel like after all those work sessions and all that effort, if five planning commissioners, the majority, or four planning commissioners, the minority, or any contingent of our staff still thinks that position X is a viable legitimate position, then I want to see that, right? Like it doesn't, you know, I mean, probably, all things considered, defer to the majority of the planning commission. Because, you know, but I mean, ultimately it lands on us. So I mean, if there was a key issue where staff really thought one thing or minority really thought another thing, then we need to see that, you know, and again, it'd be up to you to tell us what other positions might fall into the, to the. But I want, I want to hear, you know, you guys can tell, you guys are vetting, you guys have to vet for us. Like this is a legitimate point of view. May not be, you know, there might be on one topic four of those or there might be two, you know. But here's where I, here's two or three places I think the commissioners could land on this important policy question. And who is, you know, and that's something I can wrangle with. I can't wrangle with all the paper that I have in my office on this shoreline plan. So we need that, that process. I mean, I'm really leaning on you guys to hear me and produce a layout of this information that we can grapple with without just getting down the abyss.
So I want to add just maybe one column and then I'll hand it over to accounting manager. I think from staff's perspective, what we're looking at from the board's direction is to get something to ecology that can be approved. So that would be one of the columns that we would say is ecology's input. So you have majority, minority, ecology's input, and we can gladly produce that.
Yeah, you could have another column, you know, it might be that, it might be that one community group, I don't know. The Community Farmland Trust put a ton of thought into this one sub-point. And to the point that you feel we should hear their conclusion on that. Maybe just that one point, you know. Maybe it's a homeowners association, you know, or, you know, or Long Lake Management District, good example. Maybe they put, they gave a really thoughtful comment on one particular element. It didn't make the cut for the planning commission or whatever, but it's worth us hearing. Here was a legitimately argued alternative point of view on that particular point. And maybe that's the only time that that, that they come into it, you know. Ecology may weigh in here and there. I don't know. I don't know how they can feed all of that, I think. That's what I saw in the mineral lands. In fact, you presented to, I remember on one of the points, I used the Community Farmland Trust because I think it was that group that had said something that you guys felt was worth us hearing. It was like a third choice between planning commission and staff. On one point, they had a third way of doing it. Okay, that was great. And I can sort of, then I can sort of test the three permutations of the question. When I get hit with, you know, scholarly articles and all this stuff, I mean, I just, there's no way I'm gonna get into there. And I know, and I don't want, it's not appropriate, I think, for us to redo the work of all you guys and our planning commissioners.
Yeah, thank you, commissioners. This is a very complex document, as you stated. And I think it presents the opportunity to get that into the need to be detailed. And you will never be able to take it out, get out of that one, plain and simple. But I think the challenge that we have, I think we as a staff to present to the board is how we can elevate some of the, you know, elements perhaps of discrepancy to have more of a policy discussion. But I think the focal point that I encourage the board, is my humble point of view, is going through this process to have a plan that is approvable by ecology. And that is probably what you are asking for staff to give you that perspective. And, you know, and please don't, staff, don't take this as the, perhaps you deviate from the planning commission's perspective or any other perspective. This is, I think, the obligation they will have to the board is to present an honest point of view. It has the validity of this plan to be approved by ecology. But also along the way, there is gonna be some policy level decisions that you may want to make in the long term. Because the net zero is something that we need to bound, be bound in this plan. And how these potential policies that you will make will assure those will meet that intent of the net zero loss.
Seeing that zero, I think housing, just leave you thought the opposite.
So and that is what, you know, I think we need to elevate the conversation to a policy level. Because if we were to revisit, a lot of comments, the many thousands of comments they, this process has gone through and try to pick what those comments may be of a use to the board to make a policy decision is gonna be extremely complex. I think what we need to elevate is, really is what the policy choices you have based on, I'm just gonna use this. You know, the majority report versus the minority report. And what are the probably, the different points of view at a policy level that you may probably be in the position to move this back forward. But I strongly encourage with all the respect and no disrespect to the planning commission, I strongly encourage you, because it's gonna be a very tasking decision-making process, if I may, not to bring this, not to send this plan back to the planning commission. I strongly encourage you, because this is a hard work, 17 years in the making. The planning commission has done their job to bring you the best possible plan for you to consider. Now you need to get into the point of just closing the, perhaps the small gaps in order to move forward. That will be my encouragement to you.
Here's a really specific question. How many lakes are over 20 acres that qualify?
I know this one. Uh, we have, what is it? Forty-one lakes and then 24 of our streams and rivers or portions thereof.
Okay.
We don't have any reservoirs.
Uh, we do, I think.
Which one?
Like Scoop and Chuck.
Is that where it's at?
Yeah. We have, we have several artificial lakes or man-made lakes and only one Puget Sound.
One Puget Sound?
Yes.
Oh, is that a point of clarification?
Yeah. Forty-one lakes, 24 streams, one Puget Sound.
And you said over 20 acres, so.
Over 20 acres, correct, yes. Or streams that are over 20 cubic feet per second. So it's the, as I say to the public, it's Puget Sound and it's our large lakes and streams. That's how I kind of elevate our position to those.
Is that durable?
Yes.
Yeah, we can definitely, so I think if there is some grace in the product, right? Knowing that we're gonna do our best to the matrix, we'll start with the policy topics. We'll try and find the discrepancies and do our best. But if there is a place where we missed this policy decision or we didn't characterize the discrepancy correctly, just give us some space to adjust and edit as necessary. It is complicated, but we'll definitely take a shot at that for sure.
Thank you, Commissioner Mencer, for that suggestion. Thank you, staff, for bringing this forward. Long time in the making.
Right. Thank you again.
Eighty-one work sessions. I'm still not over that.
And more to go.
Okay, it is 3:16 PM. There's gonna be more to come on this, but for now, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Onward.